Welcome to the Select Board Meeting for Monday, April 26, 2021, called Order at 6:33 PM. We use a product called GoToWebinar for our meetings. All content is recorded. Enjoying via mobile or computer or in a listen-only mode via phone. If you're in computer or mobile app, you can ask questions by entering in the question box or by raising your hand. And at the discretion of the chair, we'll take questions and all questions become part of the record. First item of business tonight is executive session. We will return to regular session. So I make a motion, we move into executive session pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining. If an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the public body, which I do so declare, New England Police Benevolent Association. Is there a second?
Second.
And that is a roll call vote. All in favor, I, Jacob Smith.
I, William Benbury.
Thank you, gentlemen. So you should have that link in your email, something about 45 minutes ago.
Yes, sir.
I will keep this room open for all other attendees and we will resume to the space. If you have to close out, come back, this link will still be live.
Good.
Thank you, see everyone shortly.
I think I'm just gonna go to listen mode, Joe.
I'm sorry?
I think I'm just gonna go to a listen mode, so I'll be back when they start up.
Yeah, of course.
Okay.
Very, 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 very.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, sir.
Excellent. Okay.
We're good to go.
Excellent. Resume our select board meeting at 6:57 PM. I'm gonna jump around a little bit. Tonight, we'll go first to the Police Department Policies. Policy 1.01, used to force by sworn personnel, third read. Any edits or changes, Bill?
No issues or concerns?
Okay. Same here. So I'll make a motion that we adopt Police Network Policy 1.01, used to force by sworn personnel. Effective April 26, 2021, does that work for you, Chief, today?
Yes, sir. I'm writing it down, yep, April 26.
Perfect. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, aye? Second policy, third read is 4.10, bias-free police, professional policing policy. Again, any edits or concerns?
Questions or concerns?
Okay, likewise. But I'll make a motion that we adopt Police Department Policy 4.10, bias-free professional policing, effective April 26, 2021.
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I'll jump down to the discussion regarding the vacant police sergeant position. First order of business is we have, we had an amended sergeant's job description from May 5, 2020, that we never adopted, has been sitting, agreed and amended, but not adopted. So I'm gonna make a motion that we adopt the Irving Police Sergeant Job Description as amended, May 5, 2020.
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
And then the second part to that is we have an open sergeant's position. And I believe we have a memo from Chief Holst regarding that vacancy.
Done, screen for you right now.
Yes, sir. So Chief, you're recommending that we fill that position with Officer Adam Pecos?
I am, gentlemen. As you guys can see in the letter, Adam's been with us for many years now. He has an extensive background and training and experience, both with law enforcement and also in the military. I think he brings a lot to the table. He will be a tremendous asset, not only to me personally, but to the patrol, to you, the board, and to this town.
I have no concerns with that recommendation. Think it makes sense, Bill?
I do, and I agree, I think Officer Pecos will definitely be an asset and forward to working with him.
Likewise. So we need a motion. Do you want me to do that, or you want to do that, Bill?
No, I'll do it. I make a motion that we appoint at will Officer Pecos, the grade P3, step 3, no later than May 24th or sooner, conditional on health examination and 90-day probation.
Thank you, I will second that motion. And all in favor?
Aye.
Did that capture everything that you needed, Brian?
Yes.
Okay.
I will work with Chief Holst tomorrow and we'll get that all in motion with Officer Pecos.
Thank you, gentlemen, for your support.
Welcome, sir.
And so then, obviously, pending Officer Pecos' acceptance, we will have a patrol officer running now. This cascade effect that we're working through now. I believe. Chief Holes had also given us a memo around that and spoke to the fact that we had a screening committee. Not that long ago that went through candidates for patrol officer. And there were other candidates that had moved through the screening process that we did not offer positions to. And it sounds like, Chief, your request would be for us to. Have you reach out to the remaining candidates and see if they are available still? And potentially recommend one of them for that vacancy.
Yes, sir. That's yes, absolutely. That's what I'd like to do.
Okay. I don't have any concerns with that. Bill, I believe you served on that screening committee. Do you? Are you good with that?
Yeah, I have no concerns with it as well, and I I think. The two officers that that were. Interviewed and in line for a position if if one became available. Were excellent candidates, and I look forward to working with the two as well, one of the two.
Okay. All right. Well, if you want to get that in order, Chief, and then. Make a recommendation next week, we'll we'll put that on the agenda for next Monday.
Yes, sir. I will have an update for both of you with with either names.
Okay, excellent. I think that wraps up police department business for this evening.
That is correct.
Okay.
Right.
I'm gonna stay on, gentlemen, but I'm just gonna switch over to my phone to be part of the bridge and stuff if I will be available. You need. I'm just gonna get off camera and off mic.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, guys. Have a good night.
You too, chief. Okay. Next, I'm gonna jump to review the art street for sewer main replacement project procurement bids. And I believe we have Pete and Joe Joseph. Do you prefer Joe?
Yeah, Joe's fine.
Okay, yeah, from. Here with us tonight.
Yep. Thank you very much. So the town received four bids for the art street sewer force main replacement project. As you can see on your screen, the low bid from Aqua Line Utility Inc. For a base bid amount of one million, one hundred and sixty eight thousand and a hundred and forty dollars. Then with the total with bid alternate number one, which is a small section of pipe around a hundred feet or so. Near the end of the project to tie in to the treatment plant headworks. The total price for that was one million, two hundred and five thousand, nine hundred and forty dollars. That bid was under our anticipated cost for the project. You can see at the bottom, our estimate was around fifty thousand dollars lower for both. Sorry, fifty thousand dollars higher for both the base bid and then the bid alternate as well. So based on our experience with Aqua Line, we recently completed a project with them. They did a great job out in Everett. We reached out to some of their provided references, which is a requirement of the bid is that they provide experience information. References that we can reach out to based on those references. We did contact. We heard nothing but good things in that they would be perfectly capable to complete. The work for the art street project. So information, we believe Aqua Line Utility is the apparent low bidder. And we would recommend, you know, the town proceed with. Awarding the contract to them, the construction contract.
Just a curiosity question, I guess. What was the covert daylighting project just really briefly on in Everett?
So to be honest, I did not work on that, but I'm guessing there was an existing covert. That over time must have gotten either damaged or worn. Or plugged up with debris. In an order to continue the functionality of the covert, they had to. I'm sure they had to expose it. To make it functional again.
Okay, thank you.
So sorry, I don't have more information on that specifically.
No, that's okay. Thanks for humoring me. I was just curious what that.
Of course.
Comparison. Anything, Pete, in your view, any concerns with? With Aqua Line? Think you're on mute, but I think you said no.
How's that?
Better. Reading with virtual meetings, but it's not so great.
Yeah, no, I have no concerns with Aqua Line Utility.
Okay. We don't have experience here with them, I don't believe, correct?
Not that I'm aware of.
And just refresh my memory on what our funding for this was, Brian, or allowed.
So we secured in twenty seventeen, I want to say, we secured a borrowing authority from the voters in the amount of one point five seven million. We just have not executed that borrowing authority to date. Now that we're finally here at the the point of award, we started working on that. We're actually meeting with your financial advisor this morning. To go over their recommendations and how we're gonna proceed over the next few weeks. But you have that one point five seven for both the construction, which this fits, as well as the engineering. So you had previously signed a contract with time bond. I believe it was in the amount of a hundred and ninety three thousand approximately. For the construction and administration portion of the engineering work. And then prior to that, we had done the design and permitting work with time bonds. So those two pieces also come out of that one point five seven.
But this still leaves us actually some. Some contingency left, right, out of at least out of our borrowing authority.
Correct.
Okay. Well, that's good. I guess, just anecdotally, any opinion, Joe, on why such a variation across the? I mean, I'm glad it came in real close to your probable cause and lower is better, but there's obviously quite a swing between the bids here.
Yep, no, it's a great question. We believe a lot that is it's just the climate at the time. During our cost estimating with the town. We had recommended even carrying a twenty percent bidding and materials contingency. It's got bid a little later in the year. A lot of horizontal contractors have already lined up a lot of their spring, summer, and fall work. So it's a little bit of a crapshoot as to what, you know. How much competition there is out there for bids? So that I'd assume, you know, the bids ranging that much is just how busy each individual contractor is at this time and how much they really need the work. You know, the bidding environment at some times is unfortunate. You know, if Aqua Line hadn't come in, you know, a less. We per se contractor, you know, can throw a higher number out there, and if they get it great, you know, and they make a lot more profit if they don't. You know, then. They're okay because they've already filled their plate for the summer.
Right, right. They're already busy, so, yep.
Okay. No, we reviewed the bid in detail, you know, like I had mentioned, is right around our estimate. And there will be glaring issues with their bid. There were no items specifically that stood out that we were concerned about. You know, they carried high values for the items that we thought were difficult, and they carried, you know, active values for items that we anticipate, you know, to be pretty run-of-the-mill work for this kind of sewer force made installation.
Okay, good. Any questions, though?
No questions.
Okay. I guess then if there's no concerns, we should be ready to award.
I I am willing to move forward.
Okay.
Do you all want to go forward with the base bid plus alternate one? Or do you just want to do the basement?
I, well. I I was going to do the base bid with the. Indicating the base bid and the alternate total. Alternate one as well.
Okay.
Yeah, I agree. I think we should. Well, you can afford to tie it in and finish the whole thing, then let's do it.
Perfect.
Good.
I make a motion, we award God Street Sewer Force Main Replacement Project to Aqua Line Utility Incorporated. The total amount of base bid was one million, one hundred and sixty eight thousand, one hundred and forty dollars. The total amount with bid alternate is one million, two hundred and five thousand, nine hundred and forty dollars.
And just to clarify, we would be awarding with alternate one. I will second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Yes, one favor? Would one of you mind authorizing somebody to execute these agreements on your behalf?
I would authorize Brian Smith as the. Town administrator to be the signatory on this contract.
Will second that. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
And. Treasurer and yourself already have the required authorization for the borrowing, correct? So you'll just be working with our lender to to work on and finalize that.
I may just need you to sign the bond documents. I would just put it in your office for signature.
Okay. Excellent.
Ladies and gentlemen.
And timeline, if I recall, is what? Late summer, midsummer? Is that what we're looking at, Pete?
Sorry, I believe the wrap-up time would be somewhere around end of August, September. Am I correct?
The, based on when we started, when we're going to start the project, they'll likely finish by the end of the year. If things. Hold up construction for whatever reason, or even during construction, if something causes a delay. Some of the restoration work may push into the spring of next year. But if not, all of the work is anticipated to be completed this year. Assuming that we could start construction July one, which is, you know, there's still a couple of months there, so that shouldn't be any issue for a notice to proceed.
Soon, okay.
I maybe should have clarified substantial completion of the actual main and tie-in is probably is is hopefully late this summer, right, or into fall.
Yeah, ideally, the paving is the last thing they do, and that'll be October-ish.
Okay.
November.
Great.
We'll get that going when we started.
Absolutely.
Thank you for joining.
Questions, too, that come up along the way, please don't hesitate to reach out, and I'm happy to obviously answer any questions I can as we move along.
We'll do. Are you the primary contract contact for the project for time bond for the throughout the construction?
I am, yep.
Okay, perfect.
Do you have? Do you guys have my contact information?
I can get it out to the board.
Okay, as I can forward along to. Thank you, Brian.
Excellent. I was gonna say, I'm sure Brian and Pete have it, and we can get it from them if we need it.
Thank you, Joe.
Yeah, thank you, Joe.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Back to the agenda. Anything else you're here for tonight, Pete?
Once again, I believe that's it.
That's okay. I was looking, trying to find my agenda over here, so I wasn't even looking. No, no lip reading for me tonight. All right. Well, thank you for for joining, Pete, and it's like you'll have your hands full this summer with that one.
Yep. Well, thank you very much, gentlemen. Have a good night.
You too.
Actually, just a question. How's the repair going on? The break over here?
It is completed. They finished it on Friday. All the insulation is done. The pumps are running fine, great. We we have two heat traces there now. And the only thing left to do would be to hook up the electrical, and me and Brian are gonna work on that after July one, if I'm correct. So we're moving.
Great, great. Yeah, maybe just as you get everything wrapped up, just to wrap up memo, just so we get a summary of how it ended up versus what we had planned, you know, financial and all that. If you would put some.
Yep.
Good. I'm glad it's working and we're not. I haven't have it. The the well sucked out every every two weeks, every week.
It was a load every three days.
Even more, okay. I'm glad that's.
Glad it's done.
Good, good. All right, thanks, sir.
Okay.
Yep.
All right. I guess back to the top.
I do think you have. You have several other staff members ready to meet with you about different topics. I do believe Glenn is with us when you get to the River Warner Stretch and Street Project.
Okay. I think we'll be quick through a few things and be there in just a moment. So I'll start from the top. Discussion regarding counter response to COVID nineteen. Hasn't been any changes. That I'm aware of recently. Billy was talking with Brian a little bit about whether, you know, as as vaccinations are becoming prevalent, guidance has changed a little if we should consider maybe lifting. Some of the mask mandate, you know, in in private spaces, or, you know, when you're. When employees are working by themselves. You know, I think unfortunately to to, you know, something Glenn has asked a few times about, you know, out in public ways even alone, I think the the state. Mandate still to to wear them, so. Although I hear rumor, there may be some changes to that this week, so maybe we want to wait until next week and think about if we want to change some things based on the the latest guidance, but. Was just my my thought that maybe maybe it's time to make some adjustments, and I don't know what your your thoughts are. Hey, Chief?
Yeah, I I feel comfortable waiting until next week. I I read that 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 we're going to be some changes. What's coming, and I don't want to be, I don't want to seem. To be all over the place and not in control of what's happening, so.
Understood. Chief, did you have something to add there?
So the only the only thing is, I know the the weekly updates have kind of slowed down. That's because. There really hasn't been any updates, you know, through the FERCOG. The only major update in the county is Greenfields. I I believe it's on fifteenth of May. They're gonna be ending their clinic at the John Zahn Center. And transitioning everything over to a drive-through type clinic led by the FERCOG over to Greenfield Community College Campus, so. I think at the last last week, late last week, when they pushed out their their update, they were they were estimating upwards of seventy percent of the county has been at least first dose vaccinated with second doses scheduled. So we're making some good headway here in Frank County.
Say that sounds like higher numbers than than the state overall by far, I would expect.
Yeah. And then with the release of with the re-release of the Jansen vaccine from Johnson and Johnson, hopefully we'll see a much bigger. Numbers as they as they come through, as as they'll start being administered out also.
Are they expecting to re-release it?
Yeah, they authorized it to be, I I think it was yesterday or Friday. It went back into circulation.
Okay, good. Well, I know we're not through it yet, but, you know, big thank you to you and to. Director Batters and to, you know, Greenfield and John's on and everyone, you know, for cog, everyone who's been making this happen.
Definitely been a big group effort.
For sure. I I didn't name lots of people, and there were lots involved, and I think of all, but. You know, a little a little sad to hear John's on is gonna be shutting down, but I think it makes sense that we've got a better a better plan. It sounds like the drive-through was successful the last time. Or the first time, whichever that was, that they just did it and had a lot lot that ran through, so.
Yeah, and this is for their first time going through with that. There was a few hiccups from what I understood, but other than that, it went pretty smoothly. A lot of it was just operational stuff that they hadn't expected, but they they bounced through it pretty pretty quickly and then. Moved on. So I understand that they're doing well over five hundred doses a day through that through that. Through that drive-through application, and as the weather gets better, it's it's easier for those guys, so.
Well, I'm just glad that whether it's John's on or GCC or FERCOG or whoever. Well, I'm just glad that, whether it's John Zahn or GCC or FERCOG or whoever, it's not just Eastfield Mall, so.
Yes.
I'll take that. Good. Well, thank you, and, yeah, I mean, if we, if we hear anything sooner or what we hear, you know, chief, maybe you, me, and Brian will huddle up if there's some significant changes in the guidance, and we can come up with a recommendation for, for Bill and I, and what, you know, what, what we should do, if anything, to our current internal guidelines.
Okay.
If that works for you too, Bill?
It does.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, chief. Moving on, library construction project update, review of change order requests. Any update on more solar there? You know, I'm gonna keep asking, and I'm sorry, but.
Other than they're still working on it.
Get done.
The, uh, my understanding is the April invoice came out last week, and it does show more generation. It still does not answer the question as to what happened in December, January, and maybe the first few, uh, two weeks of, of March, but, uh, but it does appear that we're starting to see more generation. Our liaison at EverSource has been working with Natani to try to troubleshoot and connect with the correct departments at EverSource to figure out what the issue was. But assuming we keep moving in this, in this direction, it looks like the solar panels, as the days get longer, are generating more. But we still do have to resolve with that earlier issues.
Okay, any other update there?
Uh, other than in Glenn's on, if we want to move him over as well, he's been working with some of the subcontractors on different repairs that were on the punch list, including the bomb being re-seated and, and prepped for the spring. The subcontractors have been there to finish some of the, the other repair work that needs to be done on door hardware and, and similar devices. Painters are on the way in for maybe the next week, so there's a, a host of activities going on to finalize that punch list.
Yes, the, the painters will be out this Friday. They were supposed to be out this past Friday, but canceled very early in the morning. I know they replaced the threshold on the main foyer door. And thought everything was good. I see an email from Natani that they're still having a problem with it. So she had let Matt know from Moroi Construction about that this morning also. Yes, everything was sly seeded, cross seeded. We should be hopefully setting up irrigation tomorrow at some point. So we can start watering.
Are we expecting that that will be more successful this year?
Yeah, so we're running off of the hydrant at the senior center this year with an inline electric pump off two lengths of fire hose, and then there's a manifold off from that that has seven garden hose connections. It's a, it's a low water pressure out of the building in general, I'm sorry, in general, over here, it's, it's only twenty-five pound water pressure in this area, so we're hoping with the volume off from the hydrant and in this pump that they put in line, they, they've watered a whole whole football field at the same time with multiple sprinkler heads off from this pump, just pumping out of a river. So they're pretty confident in watering this time.
Okay. Any questions, Bill?
Just came to mind, is there, is there a cost analyst on the artificial grass at some point?
We could, uh, we could asphalt it and spray paint it black. Or green, or blue.
Popular remedy here.
Depends whatever color, uh, grass you want, hay, dandelions, clover. I know we've got somebody on the staff now that loves clover. Maybe we can paint it clovers.
Patty's Day passed.
It still, it still comes down to watering, Bill, no matter if, if, if they had put sod down, and we learned that the watering didn't work off from the building, then we probably would have lost the sod too, so it all comes down to watering, no matter what we put down.
And this time, we're starting a little bit earlier in the growing season. Last year, it wasn't even seeded until May. So hoping that the few extra weeks will help it germinate and survive the, the drought that we get in the summer. So hopefully a combination of these efforts work.
Okay. Any other questions before we move on?
None.
We'll do meeting minutes real quick. Review of meeting minutes from April 12.
Make a motion, we accept the meeting minutes of April 12, 2021, as written.
I will second. I had no changes.
I have no changes as well.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
And then, uh, we have a resignation from the Conservation Commission, Elizabeth Basler, attended her resignation from the CONCON. Want to thank her for her time on the commission and wish her well in her other other pursuits right now, and should she just return at some time? If there's an opening, welcome her back. So we have, we'll put that in our usual open positions notice, Brian.
Correct. We will get that out to the public, and, and you have four members, so we're seeking just the one right now.
Okay. Right, we do still have a quorum and such. All right. I thank her again. Tonight, I did skip it. I thought I skipped something. Apologies, Glenn. I'm like, reading through the agenda quickly, and I kept going, where is it next?
No reason to apologize to me.
You could have said, hey, are you skipping my topic? I'm pervert, no. Review the River Warner Stretch and Street Project update and change orders.
So, I recently, so the survey crew was out about a week ago to, to check everything out after the corrective action plan was okay. I just got an email a couple hours ago from the engineer. He'll be back out on Wednesday. Everything is completed on their end, so he's gonna go out and put final markings on, on the pavement, so the milling company will know what to do, where to do. And the contractor themselves have some structures to repair. He, he sent over new plans.
Okay.
I'm not even gonna attempt to try to show them or share my screen with you, so I'll send them so you can look at them at your leisure.
Okay. Any concerns with them, or are they just updated based on the conversations?
They're, well, they're updated after their survey. I, I haven't seen them in, in full view form yet, so I'll look at them on the desktop tomorrow morning.
Okay.
But what, what they came up with is, is accurate to what the water is doing, to what it should be doing.
Okay, and do you, how long do you expect them to be in the neighborhood, you know, kind of affecting traffic and such?
I, I think it's, it's a quick process. I don't think there's probably a few days at the most. Each one of these, these subcontractors want to get in and get out because they have bigger jobs lined up here already. And, you know, with July 1 not too far around the corner, unfortunately, they're very busy too, so they all want to get this closed out.
Okay. And I'm assuming that includes the repairs and the signage and seating and all the stuff left, right? Yeah, okay.
Yep.
Good.
But I, I've already told that I would request, um, you know, details down there also, again, just because of the large equipment.
All right. Thank you, Glenn.
Well, thank you all.
Thank you.
Not really stayed out of order in the stuff tonight. Might as well jump down to the Irving voting precincts. So we got a notice because of the census that we needed to review and potentially split up into convenient precincts. Or is it MGL, I believe? And, uh, the town clerk's recommendation is to maintain the single precinct.
Correct.
Which is within our purview, being under six thousand two hundred and fifty people, was that right?
Correct.
So, um, then historically, this is what has been done in the past. I think we had a copy of the prior. Did you have any concerns, Bill? Let's continue.
Concerns.
Okay.
So there's the, uh, drafted both of them for the two of you. There's the vote to certify that you want to remain a single precinct, and then on the next page, there was the description of, that rose again, apologies, oh, there we go, of what that precinct looks like, and, and as you would imagine, it follows the borders of the town, the town as a whole. So it would be, if you're ready to approve this tonight, it would be a vote to remain a single voting precinct, and then two would be to approve precinct one as described.
We'll make a motion that we remain one precinct town.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And then I'll make a motion that we have our precinct one as described, following the town of Irving boundaries.
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
So I will have that in the office for you to sign this week?
Okay. And next one is a firefighter safety equipment grant contract. Looks like you got another grant.
I did. So we got just about, just a little under eight thousand dollars with the intent of purchasing. When we purchased the new air packs, they had the option to have come with thermal imagers on, built into the, the regulator display. Heads up, those were about twelve hundred dollars. Turner's Falls had purchased a couple of these handheld, they're called Seeker thermal imaging cameras. And they're, they're handheld, so they're not, they're not married to the pack, so we looked at those. They work very, very similar, and the feeling from the department was that those would be more advantageous for us for use in wild wildfires, search and rescues, along with firefighting capabilities. So this, this grant from the Department of Fire Services will allow us to buy ten of those in a truck, so that will bring our, our grand total thermal images up to about fifteen of them, so we're still gonna have the, the large, the, the large handheld ones that we have purchased over the years. Actually, we, we still have every single one we've, we've ever purchased in service. There's one in every one of the frontline trucks, and then this will just augment it, so we can, we can have more, more than one as we go into the buildings.
Ten of them, then the prices come down quite a bit over the years too, huh?
Yes, so FLER, FLER makes the thermal imaging components, and they've decided over the years that it's, they could probably make some more money if, if they start putting them in their own, their own and selling them themselves instead of to everybody else and the markup, so the price has come way down from the original fifteen thousand dollars apiece that we were purchasing them, you know, ten years ago.
Wow. Well, that's exciting.
This is a no, this is a no-match grant, so they're funding, they're, they're footing the bill. We have to foot the money out, and then they'll, they'll reimburse us once it's, once it's done.
Um, and you need what, us to accept it and sign a contract?
I need you, I need you to accept it, sign the contract, and then if you could, make me the signatory on, on the signatory page.
That's exactly it.
Getting practice. Any concerns, Bill?
I have no concerns. Just a question, chief, is there a shelf life on the thermal imaging equipment that we currently have?
I would say, I'm gonna say yes. I mean, it's, it's electronic equipment, so it does age out. We still have the two original ones we purchased, that were purchased for us back in nineteen ninety-nine. They're still in service. We don't use them on a regular basis because they're a little slower. They don't start up as fast as the newer ones. Eventually, they will age out.
Okay.
The good thing with it is, is as technology gets better and smaller and, and more robust, the price obviously comes down, so the replacements for them are, are a lot less costly and can be worked into the operating budget.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm surprised that these are what, sub, sub a thousand dollars apiece?
Yeah, and they're, they're handheld. I mean, they're no bigger than an iPhone on the, on the flip side, you know, for the most part, so they're, they're, they have metal tether lines to them, so they're, they're not, they don't break. They're high-temperature plastic that the housings and they turn, like I said, Turner's has had, he bought two of them, ran them for a while, and then, and bought, I think he bought four or five additional ones, and they work great for everything from finding hotspots on brush fires and wildfires to doing search and rescues, finding people in the woods if they're close. It just felt like the versatility on this, this model would be much better than having it integrated into the pack and then having the logo pack around somewhere. You know, if you were gonna do something like that, so it made more sense.
Excellent. I'll make a motion that we accept the firefighter safety equipment grant and authorize Chief Wonka as a signatory on the contract.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
That's sufficient, Brian. I know obviously I have to sign it, but.
I will have that in the office ready for you to sign off and for chiefs to take it from there.
Thank, thank you very much, gentlemen.
You're welcome.
You're welcome. Is this the one that I signed the, the application on Friday, or is this a different one?
Yeah, it's a different one. That one, I just needed your signature on that one's. I don't know, each department runs it different. These guys let me apply for it, and then you guys sign the contract, EOPS, for some unknown reason wants you to sign saying that it's okay for us to apply for it.
Yeah, so I don't know if he's gonna get it, Bill, but he, he applied for another grant, and I, I signed the application on Friday because we had to, had to have the, the chief elected officer sign the application, so. So maybe we have more coming, hopefully.
We have not been, uh, we have not been late on grant funds for the last year. We have been very, very fortunate in the grant department lately, so.
We have. I think someone said it last year, the money is flowing, so we'll, we'll.
Might as well take advantage of it.
Absolutely. We'll capture what we can, right? And Ryan has a bunch more in the works already, so she's gonna keep us all busy. Which is good.
I think that was the.
We should look at the, I'm thinking maybe bringing up the project list next week if that's, uh, sounds good with you. I think there been a few changes and some things wrapped up, so we probably take another look at what, what's ahead. And then the next topic is the French Canadian Bridge suicide prevention barriers.
So I know Raya's on with us as well, and we chief also still with us.
Hey, Ryan.
Hi. Hello.
So. So I believe our Senator Representative recommended that we submit some additional support letters to the state as they're looking at the, at funds and the CAP, right?
Correct. And they had already written a letter that included several different projects, so I borrowed some language from their letter, added language, and the, we did get an update. the, we did get an update from Mast dot recently that they had their public hearing. They're still planning on construction in twenty twenty two, spring twenty twenty two. They just need the funding to do it. Um, so the number and all of that are actually pulled from Senator Comerford's letter. Um, and then I also updated the report, the tenure report with new language saying basically with a new update because previously that report, the ask had been to complete the design. Um, so I updated it with a new ask to fund the project.
And Billy, I think the, the late amendment to it, I don't know if you saw it before the meeting from the packet, which was just to note that we, you know, enclose and note that we enclosed the kind of the, um, the table we've been maintaining that Mariah's been working with public safety and maintaining the, you know, the incidents as part of the, the letter, as long as you're good with that.
Yes, I am. I, um, we used it, uh, when, when we did the remote, um, um, on, on the, uh, French King Bridge and I introduced that packet that, uh, Mariah had worked on and others. Um, and it was received very well.
So. Good, excellent.
We would like to include this, but, um, Chief Host did help me update the numbers for April, and so now we have a tally of how many incidents we've had this calendar year. Um, we could include that there have been nine calls to Irving, um, this year. Um, you know, it it's not included in the report because it's a ten year report, so it might, well, just to show like this is happening this year as well.
Okay.
Do you want to make that edit? Yeah, I mean, I think you could add it at the end of that, um, or or in that sentence, you could even say, you know, we've enclosed it for the previous ten years and, you know, and you could say further, we've even had, uh, you know, we've already had nine incidents that aren't listed in this year, you know.
Okay. Can I, can I ask who the, who who are we sending this to?
You're sending this to Go ahead.
I was just gonna say the Governor and Secretary Heffernan.
Okay. Um, I would, so, uh, Stacy Ham will reach out to me and say that she has a, I believe she has a meeting, it's a phone, phone meeting with, um, um, McGovern, is that right? Um, regarding this also, you know, from the federal side, so I don't know if we want to CC it to them also.
Absolutely, governor. And so you see it to McGovern, we're gonna CC it to the rest, to our local reps, you might as well. Um, the other thing is that the dollar amount, I don't know if that's a typo in the language that was copied or just a typo in our translating it, but that's not two point six. It's actually like there's another zero. Zero. Let me just say, we need the extra zero.
That's an important zero.
Yes, very, very, very important.
Someone's gonna go two thousand six hundred dollars? Why isn't it done already? No. All right, I will make those edits. Oh, all kidding aside, it's a, it's a serious matter. Okay. Anything else we would like to add or change in this, Bill or anyone?
I'm all set with it. I think it's, uh, it looks, it looks good.
Excellent. Along the same thread, um, we're, we're looking at cameras and working with Gil on, on some issues around those and what we can do to to fix and or improve those and we'll keep the board updated as we have more info in the interim. So I can get this ready for your signature for tomorrow? I'll get the auto?
Yes.
Sounds good.
Thank you all.
Thank you, Mar.
Thank you, Mar.
I believe that is the last item of business. Did I skipped around so much? I feel like I missed something, but.
Oh, you got them all.
I think we hit them all.
Well done. It's not even eight o'clock.
You're gonna jinx it.
How you guys do this, but I am enjoying every second of this.
I'd love to think that we started twenty twenty one with a different take on how to be efficient, but it's just, I think we're finally getting in the rhythm and it's thanks to you and the team and, and, you know, all of the town departments and employees to making this efficient for us, so. We're hitting our stride, okay? We'll call it that. Uh, we've been getting a lot done now. That's, that's a big part of it, so. Okay, um, so next week, uh, we got a few things that we talked tonight that will carry into next week, uh, likely a recommendation on patrol officer. Um, I think we should review the project list, which I know the team has been looking at and working on through all the departments over the last couple of weeks. Um, so we can take a look at it and see, see how that's, um, shaping up for the next, well, the next fiscal year, which is imminent, and then obviously out three years or so. Uh, any other topics for next week that we need to put on?
I just wanted to, um, to ask Brian, I I saw that, um, this afternoon, we, we received, um, paperwork about shared streets, shared streets and space, spaces grant program bonus round. Is that something that we're, do we have, uh, time to look at or are we gonna try to take advantage of it or?
I know that if it's this similar program that was released last, uh, August or or September, I know that at the time Mariah took a look at it to see if there were any opportunities to partner with our business community.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I don't believe at that time that we had any sites. Am I remembering that correctly, Mariah? That would work?
Yeah, I think we decided that we, A, we had a lot on our plate for the, the past year and this coming construction season. And that we would have to go out and find something for this to work with. We, there wasn't anything that readily popped up that made sense to fit into it. Um, and that was why we didn't pursue the first round and I think reevaluating it, I I think even now we would have to shoehorn something into that rather than, I don't think we have a project that matches it super clearly.
Right. And some of the communities, my understanding is that they took their municipal streets and they would carve out what may have been the shoulder of the street or the parking area and turn it into shared, uh, commerce space. So, uh, restaurants or other establishments could create that social distancing and still conduct their work. Um, a lot of our businesses exist around Route Two, so we couldn't naturally just control that. That would have to involve Mast dot. Uh, but we were able to find some other ways to work with some of our business, uh, entities and respond to those needs. So we can certainly reach back out to our business community just to do a check in and say, uh, we're gearing up for the summer. We know that there's another grant opportunity out. Um, if if they present a need that makes sense and aligns like Mariah was discussing, we can bring that forward to you all. Would that be helpful?
Sure.
Okay.
When that, um, grant application is due, I don't have it pulled up, but that's.
It's due, yeah, I just had it a second ago. Um, it's due June, uh, no, it's due, uh, May twenty first.
Okay. Reach out. Um, I would just say, I, if we're gonna actually fill out an application, I would need at least two weeks to be able to actually complete an application.
I could ask Betsy, uh, for a current business licensing list from the clerk's office. And we can just reach out to those partners and just let them know that this is something we've become aware of today and, and we're happy to hear requests if it makes sense to partner. Okay.
Works for me.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mar. The team has been, um, helping me stay on top of our agenda items better and so I've got this really great overview now of all the things that we need to do, Bill, which is lengthy. But, uh, in looking at that, um, I'm thinking for next week, uh, in addition to what we already discussed, um, David Brule submitted some, uh, along with a few others, uh, some concerns and recommendations around the mosquito, um, the state mosquito spraying plan and some alternate options. And so, um, we're gonna have him next week to, um, present that, explain the concerns and and we can talk through what we found and what we think we may be able to do. Sounds like some other communities around us have opted for an alternative rather than the blanket spraying, so. And there's some concerns that, you know, around the impacts of doing that or options to do it instead. Um, the, uh, I think we'd ask him also, there's a, there's a, um, a land acknowledgement, uh, that he is, wants to present to us as something that we may consider for our, our town meetings. So we'll have, uh, him here, we'll have him do that as well.
Right.
We have, uh, an age friendly community presentation. We've invited them to come for Monday as well and present that. Uh, just to give you a heads up on what's, what's coming, Bill.
Okay.
And I think that that's probably the items. Oh, and, um, Director Better submitted a reopening plan for the senior center, and so I wanted to put that on for Monday as well. We can review that. Um, especially if we have some updated guidance for COVID and such, we can kind of look at that and see how it fits in and if we're comfortable with the plan. Uh, and that sounds like plenty already, and I'm sure, sure a few other things will come in before Monday, so. But that's, uh, that's what we have on the docket so far.
Okay.
Okay. All right.
Thank you, John.
Nothing further. I'll make a motion to adjourn at seven fifty four P M.
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Have a great night.
Thank you.
All right.